Welcome. Any, uh, let's start with the approval of the agenda. Any changes, amendments, additions? Right, so hearing none, last for approval.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Great, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, motion passes. Approval of the consent agenda, you have the minutes in your minute, minute, in your packet as well as the payment of bills. I, I just want to make a, a note, we, we don't say thank you enough. These packets are detailed to the nth degree. I don't know if the public even knows how thick a packet is, but it is significant. So, um, a lot to go through, but, uh, if there's any additions or deletions to the minutes or the bill, questions on the bills, please say so now, otherwise I'll take a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Great, great, thank you. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Alright, this is our first chance to go into public comment. Uh, we're gonna have two of them, one at the front end and one at the back end. Uh, we appreciate your participation in the meeting. Uh, you have, uh, the right to rest the board on any issue you'd like. It's your time for public comment. Uh, we, we will respectfully listen but not engage in conversation. It may seem a little odd, but we do have an agenda that we go through and township business to attend. So if there's anything you'd like to have further discussion, please, um, connect with our manager, Bill Cousins, and, uh, yeah, we'll set up a meeting after this. Uh, in order to keep the meeting moving, uh, please leave your comments. So, anyways, I'll, I'll start on the right side. Jim, you're right, you're eager. Alright, please. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name's Jim Barry. I live at nine eighty-two North Faywood Drive. And, uh, I'm also, uh, Ottawa County Commissioner from District One, which of course is most of Park, all of Port Sheldon and Olive Township. And, um, just wanted to come in, um, give a quick update, um, and also stay and listen to what's happening in Park Township. Want to start by saying our new administrator, Patrick Waterman, started, uh, this week, and, uh, he was, he was given the assignment after fifty-eight people applied to be the county administrator, which I hope, which I took to be a good sign, that people want to work for Ottawa County. Uh, Patrick, you might be familiar with, was a Hudsonville City Manager for twelve years. Um, most recently was the city Wyoming as the Assistant Manager. Uh, in total twenty-three years in, in municipal government service, uh, his master's degree in public administration. And I think he's gonna do a terrific job and, you know, really glad that, uh, he was there. Uh, we got to this point because we were fortunate enough to take Gary Rosema and Ron France out of retirement for a while. Um, Gary, of course, was a long-time Ottawa County Sheriff. And Ron France was the county prosecutor for thirty-seven years, I believe. And, um, Gary acted as interim administrator with Ron as, as the assistant. And, uh, you know, we just can't, can't thank him enough for their, for their service to the, to the county. And, uh, especially with a lot of new commissioners that came on the board this year. It was really great to have somebody with a lot of institutional knowledge and experience and was able to help work with us as well. We got through the transition period. Um, news-wise, one more interesting thing that I think we've got from the county. Uh, we received a, a grant for half a million dollars from the Environmental Protection Agency. Um, I happen to serve on the, um, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And this is a grant which is going to go to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to do phase-one evaluations of bladed properties ac- across the county. Um, the phase-one portion is just trying to get, get your hands around, what is the issue with some bladed property, whether that's a, an old gas station or any kind of a commercial or industrial location? Um, that's a big block to future development when developers aren't exactly sure what they, what they're dealing with. And so that grant will help developers, uh, understand that. And in some, in some situations, we'll be looking at phase-two of actually doing some of the, um, uh, actual remediation work that's involved with that. So, I think it's a great economic development tool to, to put bladed properties back into more productive, constructive uses for the community. And, um, and we just got that and we'll be taking applications from developers on that. So, if you have any questions, I'll be sticking around for a while and, um, glad to be here and thank you very much. And I kept it to about two minutes, I think.
Thank you. Continue on the right side, anyone? My right side, listen. Oh, no, you're, my right. Uh, uh, on the left side, anybody would like to talk, uh, in, in public comment? Okay, okay, great.
So I've been saying that mistakes, um, it's part of being human. And I'm sick, I apologize, correct it, and to whatever, can fix the situation. As a board, you know that the township spent decades telling people that it was okay to rent a home short-term. What do you mean for any length of time? You know that every single zone, except for me, can join there. Consistently told people they do not need a permit to have a short-term rental. There were no restrictions, restrictions. You know, but other employees and staff did the same. You believed it was perfectly fine and go. Sorry, we shouldn't do this. You also know, short-term renters has spent the last few years being built on social media. Literally, culture and more. You didn't have to stop it. Backed it, essentially encouraged it. So I think, you know, actually, we told all these people that they could do this. They checked with us, and it's not their fault. Let's work to find a reliable solution. Even to correct your mistakes. Instead, you did the opposite by doubling down, encouraging divisiveness. You say it's all about the residents, but the township will continue to contend for them. But you should be as fair as possible to all of your residents, not just those you agree with. Most people want reasonable regulations, rules, limits on their short-term rentals, which makes perfect sense. That's it. So I ask you, when it comes to contending for your residents, what about the at least sixty-three residents who are short-term owners? Most of them have had zero complaints level of concern beyond existing. What about us? Um, can't see in good faith. So, double-checking to see if we permit for rentals, we trusted your answers. And, uh, now you've been told, you've been told to trust you, that it was one of us because, you know, those people just run. You don't have to stand by mistakes, a little bit, apologize, do anything to fix them. So good if your stance hurts real people, people who are your residents. You can fix this if you wanted to and hope your residents deserve it.
Anyone else? Alright, we'll close public comment. Alright. Okay, so, uh, just as a reminder, uh, we are here. Uh, the Park Township is our vision. Park Township is a family-friendly, connected community that values our natural features, agricultural character, and recreational opportunities. In our mission, we practically listen and lead, providing exceptional services and amenities while carefully stewarding our resources. And we're gonna do this with integrity, respect, and being genuine. This is a reminder of our mission, vision, and values. And with that, uh, we're gonna move into department reports. There was a slight, uh, amendment to the packet that was sent out a day ago. We got the wrong data on our sheriff's report, if you had picked up that. It was for Howland Township versus Park Township. So we got that corrected. But, uh, a- any other comments or questions about, um, the department reports? Hearing, hearing none, we'll accept the reports as they stand. Thank you. And again, thanking all those who submitted the reports. Provide us great information. Alright, uh, jumping into, uh, number, uh, action items. And this was, this discussion, uh, is as a result of the, the, the lawsuit resolution. Uh, and Dan is prepared to inform us and guide us on what happened or what will be happened. So, Dan?
Yes, thank you. On November fourth, Judge Halsin issued his opinion in Jeremy Allen, uh, Al, meaning other people. I think there are approximately a hundred and seven names involved, uh, against Park Township regarding the appeal of the zoning Board of Appeals decision interpreting the nineteen sixty-three zoning ordinance and the nineteen seventy-four zoning ordinance. In a nutshell, Judge Halsin, as you've probably seen in the media, found completely in favor of the township that the zoning Board of Appeals did not err in making its decisions. The opinion is very well reasoned. I would encourage you all to read it. I know it's available online. I know I've shared it with the interim manager. I've shared it, I think, with the supervisor, the clerk. So you should be able to have access to it. There are a couple of things I just want to point out. Uh, one, Judge Halsin found that short-term rentals were not permitted after the nineteen seventy-four zoning ordinance in any residential zoning district. They're limited to the C-two resort commercial district. Judge Halsin found that they are in fact a commercial use in residential neighborhoods, and the Township Board appropriately put them in commercial districts. Under the nineteen sixty-three ordinance, Judge Halsin found that they would be permitted in Residence District A if they were approved as a motel by the Board of Appeals. They would be permitted in Residence District B if they were a tourist home. Absent that, a short-term rental would have had been in operation prior to nineteen sixty-three and in continuous operation without abandoning the short-term rental in order to have lawful non-conforming status. So, in order for people to show non-conforming status, they would have to show that they established it sometime between nineteen sixty-three or before. But if it's after nineteen sixty-three and before nineteen seventy-four, they would have to identify which of the two zoning districts they were in. And if they were in Residence District A, they would have to show that they had Board of Appeals approval in order to continue a non-conforming use. Or they would have to show that they're in Residence District B and were either a motel or a tourist home. The other thing I want to point out in terms of Judge Halsin's opinion is he indicated, uh, on a couple of different occasions that based upon the concessions made by Mr. Allen and the whole group's attorney during the oral arguments on the hearing that the nineteen seventy-four ordinance equated SDRs with motels was important, uh, because it rendered moot any argument that the nineteen seventy-four ordinance was vague or ambiguous. So Judge Halsin ruled that your ordinance wasn't vague or ambiguous, and that essentially your attorney conceded that. And he also noted that that conceded that any potential ambiguities beyond that concession can also be resolved using general principles of statutory interpretation, as we have said all along. I know people are going to be upset about this. But moving forward, short-term rentals are not permitted. We told Judge Halsin that the Township Board and the Township would not enforce retroactively. So if people stopped as of November fifth, the day after the decision, if they stopped, you're not gonna be citing anybody. If they continue operating short-term rentals, the intent is to cite them for violating the zoning ordinance and seek to abate the nuisance. Get a court order to say, you must shut it down. And if the individual does not follow that court order, then they would be in contempt of court, and the court would impose more sanctions than the township could ever possibly do. Just also in, I, I've, I've received an email from Mr. Kunnwinski indicating that they do plan to either file a motion for reconsideration or an appeal to the Court of Appeals. And they're thinking of also some or all members filing a federal lawsuit claiming that it is unconstitutionally vague. Again, I want to emphasize that on more than one occasion, in Judge Halsin's opinion, he stated that it is not vague both by rules of statutory interpretation and by concession of their attorney. Thank you.
Attorney. Comments, questions? I just want to express our appreciation for Dan's work through this lengthy activity and, uh, his consistency of this representing our team, uh, and board and zoning board appeals. So I, I just want to publicly thank you, Dan, for what you have done, uh, for our, our, our community and, and on behalf of the board as well. So, thank you. Moving on to, uh, B. Thank you. Uh, STR enforcement process. Interesting, just a, a prelude because Mika comes forward. Um, we are a governing board, not an operational board. Uh, we have to be careful about getting into staff activity, and here's our staff is going to inform us on how, how there may be some movement on how they go forward. So.
Yep, so, um, following this suit, have been meeting as a staff, working on putting together, uh, the enforcement protocols going forward. We have a letter that's drafted that'll be going to Dan within the next day or two, and then we plan to be sending that out next week for short-term rental owners who are still operating, who we show are still active. And so they'll all receive that. We're also going to be sending a copy of the opinion. Um, we've gotten the impression a couple times over the past few years that not all of the owners seem to be fully informed about what's actually happening. At the ZBA hearing I had, somebody asked me a question that I kind of thought that they, was pretty clear that they should have known already. So we want to make sure that all the short-term rental owners really understand kind of what's happening and where this is. Um, we are enforcing starting now, as Dan alluded to. So if someone stops right now, we're not gonna go back and enforce, cite them for what happened over the summer. Uh, and we'll be looking at that as we continue on. So, you know, as we look at a property, if they, even if they stop this week, we're not gonna go back to November five and say, well, you were still doing this on November five. We'll say, the nuisance has abated, thank you, and then we'll kind of move on from there. We do expect that some of these are going to switch to either long-term rentals or to sell. We've already heard of a couple who have done that. Uh, but we do think that there are going to be remaining short-term rentals that'll need to be addressed. Uh, so right now, we're working on putting together individual cases. We're not going to start enforcement action until we feel very confident about it. And we have all the information we need. Uh, Alonso, our co-enforcement officer, and Dan and I uh, are setting up a bi-weekly cadence to meet and to do case review and to see what's ready so that we can kind of do that moving forward. So that's, uh, that's kind of the broad contours of the plan, and we're getting rolling, starting now.
Any questions for Mika? Alright, so, thank you, Mika.
So, do, is there any way that the reporting can be done that doesn't rely on our residents reporting, our listening apps, or do for rents, or anything that you, your teams come up with that would assist in?
But we don't just have residents' reports. We have other sources of information that we're pulling from.
Okay, moving on. Uh, C, item C, Winstrom Park Pathway Project Agreement. Anytime we get money from the state, there's paperwork that goes along with it and agreements. And so, uh, Manager Cousins, will you please guide us through this process?
I will, I will. In, uh, September, uh, we were informed that we did, uh, receive approval for the grant to, uh, work on improving the trails and natural areas of Winstrom Park. Uh, the total, uh, uh, project is estimated at six hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. One half, uh, will be grant funds from the Natural Resources Trust Fund, and the other half is budgeted from, uh, Park Township. Um, what's before you tonight is just, uh, the resolution, uh, to accept the, uh, um, the grant and, uh, and order or ask the manager to sign the grant agreement so we can move forward and start, uh, doing the final planning and get ready for, uh, bidding out the project to a contractor.
Any questions for the manager on the project or, excuse me, on the process? The project, we know, but the process? Alright, hearing none, I'll take a motion to, okay, please.
Question. Yeah, so we have to spend three hundred and some thousand dollars on our, does that all have to be to another contractor, or can that be, can our maintenance department do some of that work as well, or is it, is there a way from a dollar perspective that, that our maintenance department could be part of that contributed dollar? Or does it have to be, like, to another entity outside of us?
This project would be a bid out to a contractor project.
Good question. Thank you. Alright, any other questions? Alright, I'll take a motion.
Make sure we accept the resolutions and the agreements and offer us our manager to something.
Sure. Great, great. Motion is made and supported. Any other questions before we ask the question? No, alright, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Great, thank you. Alright, last month, we tabled the insurance, uh, question so that Manager Cousins could, uh, possibly look into it. He did, and in your, in your packet, he, he did some, uh, some suggestions, but also said that there was, uh, some short timing. So, uh, Bill, would you?
One of the, yes, thank you. One of the issues you get into anytime you're looking at health insurance, at least in the governmental, uh, world, is that it takes time to get, uh, to get the numbers as to what it's gonna cost you. Uh, the insurance companies want, uh, um, information on each of the employees and their spouse and their family, ages. Uh, some get into health conditions, uh, before they issue their, um, rates for that project. Usually that takes two to three months. Uh, so for us to be able to do that, we would have had to have started in August. Um, if we were to do it now, and, um, we would end up maybe having our results in January. If we switched companies, then our, technically, our employees would not have any health insurance after January first. Um, went through this process once, uh, where we, uh, reimbursed employees for other expenses in the month of January. Uh, but the, uh, the mental side was even worse. Uh, just them knowing they don't have insurance, what's it gonna cost? Putting it on credit cards, if they had credit cards, uh, it makes it really tough. So, we went back and I guess to step back a little bit, we've been working the last few years with a pool. Um, because local governments found when you've got five employees, fifteen employees, we have twenty-two. Uh, the smaller your group is, the harder it is to get any kind of a recent, or a reasonable price rather, for your insurance premiums. So we entered into a pool with other communities in southwest Michigan. Uh, the pool that we're in offers us the opportunities for Priority Health or Blue Cross. That's where, where we're limited to. So, we're gonna go back and, and talk to the pool again and, and get the numbers for, uh, Blue Cross was our other, uh, uh, company, and the, uh, premiums were about, uh, one hundred dollars, seventy to one hundred dollars higher per month for the employees. So we do have the lowest-cost plan in the pool that we're in. And so my suggestion tonight is that we go ahead and, and, uh, adopt the resolution to be able to use the Priority Health again this year. Uh, but then, uh, direct staff, which actually I've already done, to do this in August next year so that we can not only look at Priority and Blue Cross, but see what Aetna might be offering, Humana, uh, United Healthcare. Uh, one of the newer ones, Trinity, now is into the health insurance field. Uh, but we can get a more robust, uh, estimate on what the cost might be going forward if we, if we do that. Uh, unfortunately, a- and we'll see how it goes, but when you step out of the pool, now you're back to just trying to get insurance costs for twenty people instead of two hundred. Um, so it may not be any better than what we got now, but at least we can say we've looked at it and, you know, see what, what is out there.
So, uh, the, the recommendation is, uh, chart number B, correct?
Chart number B, and we also need to, um, um, have a motion to approve adopting for the out-doubt resolution for PA one fifty-two.
With that, with that, uh, analysis or explanation, any questions for Manager Cousins?
Uh, just thank you. I asked you to do that, so appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Do we need two separate motions?
Yes, please. Yep, we've got the PA one fifty-two opt-out, and then the other to adopt and accept chart B, uh, on the Priority Health, uh, plan.
I'm in the first motion to adopt the PA one fifty-two act out in a solution.
Motion's on the floor, supported. Any questions on one fifty-two? Alright, all in favor of opting out PA one fifty-two, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, uh, now we can, uh, move to the insurance proposal, uh, entertain a motion for, for chart B. Uh, proposal, that's in the court packet.
I make a motion. Choose and support chart B and all of that means.
I'll support.
Great, thank you. Motion on floor, supported. Any questions before we take the vote? Just a note, i- it does maintain the HSA contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars, correct? Or, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars to insurance, split a couple different ways. It goes into.
Township contribution, yes.
Township contributions, it remains the same as it was last year.
That's great.
Just make sure the community knows that we did contribute last year. This is now a new cost. Alright, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Uh, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Cousins, for that analysis and looking to that. Alright, uh, Wyoming Water Plant. Okay, it's, this is the ones that I get the email and I pass it on to Bill. I say, okay, it's yours. Because I don't understand what's going on here. So Bill, please guide us on this one, because it's a part of some group.
This is a long-term, uh, project. The city Wyoming, uh, water system was expanded in two thousand and seven, and they utilized a bond issued by out of a county. Uh, at that time, the amount was thirty-eight thousand, one hundred, thirty-eight million, one hundred forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the proceeds of that bond were shared by the municipalities that use that water system, uh, namely Park Township, Georgetown Township, Zeeland Township, Jamestown Township, and Olive Township, and the cities of Zeeland and Hudsonville. The bond was refunded in twenty fifteen. Um, insurance or interest rates came down, so by refunding it, it sold those communities, uh, money. And, uh, we're doing that again. That's the request to do that this year. We, uh, refund the bond this year at a savings of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars off of the total, um, amount. And the bond plans to expire in twenty thirty-two. So by, um, approving, uh, this resolution, we're on. Approving this resolution, we're on board to have the county or the city rather Wyoming go forward. With the refunding and save us the eight hundred eighty thousand dollars.
In total, that doesn't come to us. Total, we we don't get eight hundred eighty thousand dollars, don't judge yourself.
It doesn't sound so exciting if you reduce it down to the household level, it's two cents per thousand gallons. But overall, the eight hundred eighty is definitely worth going forward and doing.
Absolutely. So I think the motion has to. To adopt the resolution, so I entertain a motion to adopt for a session.
I'll move we adapt the attached resolution to approve refunding the bond for the water system expansion. Thank you.
And I will support that as well. Any questions or comments about this one?
It was a little confusing at first when they said refunding. They just.
Yeah, they agree to. I did attend, okay, what they vote here. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Right, motion passes. I did attend their annual meeting at the Wyoming Water Treatment Plant. If you ever want to have a fascinating tour, that is the place to go, it is fascinating, you know, like. How exciting is water? Actually, it's kind of neat. It's pretty kind of cool, so. Let's see, moving on to PA. One ninety eight. Okay, so this is a little, this is a, we. We're getting ahead of a potential application with this resolution with this process and so. Bill's going to set it up. And but this is, if we're doing the right things, this is a little unusual because it's called industrial. Facilities tax, it sounds kind of scary, whether it's this industrial stuff going in, but. Bill's been in the middle of this one, so thank you, Bill.
Sure, yeah. PA one ninety eight is an industrial facilities tax exemption process that many communities have. A policy for that have industry in their in their community, so it is a bit different to see where it happened. Or coming to us in a more agricultural community, but the act does provide for. Agriculture that processes their food on site to be able to to utilize this process when they expand. So we have a. We have a growing township that was looking to build a facility to expand their facilities and process blueberries. On site and to do that, they're going to request that that they receive a state tax. Reduction, it's as they they spend, let's say a million dollars, they get. Reduction of half of that off of their tax bill for this at the state level. But to go through that, they need approval from the township or the city that they're operating in. What we don't have today is a policy for them to go through that process. And so that's what you're being asked to to approve tonight is the township's policy for that for any applicant. To come forward to request a district, it's a two step project. First, we. Set up a district that usually covers just the property that's. Going forward with their I F T and then we approve the I F T itself. Reason that you would that this process has to go or be gone through is that. An individual community may love having a expansion of their facilities or industrial facilities, but. What are we going to get out of it as a community? If we're just given tax breaks, then are we costing the residents more? So by having some opportunities for you to put caveats on that, which typically are. An increase in employees or retention of employees. And and then how much money is being spent, you know, if somebody's going to invest two hundred thousand dollars. You may not feel that that's worth it in in the township or if they're going to spend two million. That may not be worth it, maybe it needs to be ten, but that's the decisions and the opportunities that you have as a as a. Board to decide what's the benefit to our township by having this expansion. And for the most part, there's some with the with the dollar amount that's being spent, but usually the more important thing is how many employees are going to be. Added to our community that are working here. That we hope then find a house here and live here, shop here. Go to the grocery store, the restaurants, those kinds of things. So that's, this is the first step of that process to get the the policy in place. And if you approve that tonight, then next month I'll come to you with the request to set a public hearing for the. I D D, the industrial district, and then after that would be the actual request for the for the tax abatement.
Are we in liberty to lightly describe describe the project? Are we already on wait until next?
Down the corner of one.
Sixtieth.
So we're giving it head with a policy so when they apply, there's a process that we will go through.
And it's one way you can crunch all the members.
Today, we have nothing to crunch. We're just making, we're laying the path so that they could potentially. Yes.
A a policy, I'll say somewhere what you might do when you put together an ordinance that says if you want to build a garage. You need to fill out this application and then go through the process, how many feet from the property lines. So this is setting that up, that's all it's it's doing.
And up to this time, we've never had any I F Ts in the township, so.
Never had a policy, yeah.
Dan, you reviewed the policy?
Yes, I did. It was a fantastic job.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll enter, any other questions on the policy? Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to approve the policy.
Just, pardon my ignorance, but with talking about industrial development. Is there any correlation in the verbiage of this policy? We don't have an industrial district. It's obviously we've only got agricultural.
Right.
And is there a need to put agriculture, make it specific, more specific to agricultural as opposed to industrial?
No, it's not required to get the the property owner has to use the property as zoned and permitted. And the agricultural use also is processing some of the food, so under the different law, they can see this kind of abatement.
The key is that. The the district is allows for that kind, the ag district allows for processing of foods. It does not allow for making widgets. So if this were that kind of a process, it would have to be in an industrial zone district.
It's obviously that our manager has gone through this before, so.
Few times.
All right, I entertain emotions.
So move to accept this as presented. The policy to, where is it, policy or?
Act one ninety eight property tax, I mean.
There you go, that one.
Okay, so we're going to prove that one. All right, so any other further questions before we? Questions? All right, all in favor, say aye. Okay, motion passes, thank you. All right, let's cut them on here. Adopt the twenty twenty six board meeting calendar. I hope you had a chance to look at your. Future calendar. It's a note on on the schedule that January twenty nine. The subcommittee for the manager team. I believe if all things work well, that that will be a session that the board may, again. That's a long ways away, may use to have for manager interviews. Okay, all right, no. Okay, so the twenty ninth may be that day, may. He won't be there, okay. I have a conflict on. April sixteen work session, so that's either going to be canceled or we'll just use the thirtieth. Depending on what we do, I can't ask. Western Theological Seminary to change their graduation for me, so. So, 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 so there's a little dilemma on that one, so for me, but.
It's January twenty nine, sure, I'm going to be here. I know I talked to you about if we could. Watch it, zoom eyes, I know we can't vote.
Yep, okay. Good to know, because also these are questions that we're trying to figure out. If we were to bring candidates in, when's the best window to do that?
If I know specifically they're going to do it, I can get air on it, get the feedback.
Is it, is it, does it, is it more prudent that we would tie in those candidate interviews? In the first meeting, February twelve, that window?
That's going to be a problem.
As a problem for you, okay.
That's a big payday with the budget meeting and the boards.
That's true. Okay, all right, well. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to play out the schedule as it plays out, so I think we're going to have conflicts along the way, so.
The sooner I know, I mean, I forget everything.
Okay. We thought, with, Bill, we were in the meeting, we thought we could get out some early stuff done, maybe it's earlier in January. Is that better?
We can work that and move, see about moving that date up a week or so.
Yeah, we're we're, we'll be pretty transparent, yeah, we we just worked the schedule. The, the, you know, hour before the meeting, just to try to figure out calendars, so we will communicate to the larger board. Those opportunities in January then. All right, any other, any other, we're not, these are going to get thrown on the calendar, we'll play it month by month, so. Hey, so I'll take a motion to approve those, this graph to make it a real agenda for twenty twenty six.
Question to approve day. Or leaving camera.
Great, all right, all in favor, say aye. It was great, the motion passes, great. We all live, we all live busy lives, that's pretty awesome. All right. Day, possible, uh, a closed session. Number ten. Numbers. Which one? Okay, sure, what, what's. I don't know if we can do that.
Yeah, my recommendation is that i- if you wanted to do that, and I apologize, Shar, it should have been done to amend. The agenda to add items under ten. To say for possible discussion, there there will be the opportunity for board comments later.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go into a closed session as relates to one of our most weeks, so.
My motion is to go in a closed session, not as identified here, it's the Genesee Road and.
Yes.
It's not returning client privilege, but it is because of specific pending litigation.
All right, so. Yes, support.
Okay, trustee Clark, yes, trustee Gerards.
Yes.
Trustee Jones, trustee Somet. Treasure Stegner.
Yeah.
Mr. Stegner.
Right. We need a form. All in favor of going back into open session, say aye. Motion passes, great, thank you. All right, so we are going. Into the manager's report. Anything that the the manager should highlight or emphasize, we all read it, obviously. But anything or?
On item one hundred fifty second avenue, the eighty eight pads were placed on Tuesday.
Pads were placed on Tuesday for hundred fifty second pathway, we're just waiting for them to clean up the orange barrels and. That is virtually a completed project. An item that's not, my agenda focusing is it just happened yesterday, federal government is open. I talked to Richard Balsano today. Well, of course, I'm sorry, yes. We had a discussion sometime next two weeks, we should get the new offer paper where. Everything that's been approved by Shepard and the feds and anybody else that's involved with it. We sign that, send it back, they sign it and send it back to us and sixty days after that we close. So we should be closing by the end of January.
Government doesn't shut down.
But we're supposed to shut down in the end of January, so we just beat that. They had a good talk today. That's all I have.
Manager Cousins and I put our nose down towards past bowler mans. It 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 actually looks like James could open. It's lined, there's gravel on the side. I I visited there two days ago and they had to put one coat of asphalt on the bike path. But otherwise, the road was done, so I'm I'm optimistic by the weekend that it may be open now. I am, this is from the cheap seats, I have no authority, but it looked.
We're just going to be open too.
It looked like the corner was all open, yeah. I walked up to the corner and it it was clean. They had dirt on the side, they were doing gravel, it it looks beautiful, but I'll I'll believe it when those signs get pulled. So, anyway.
Mr. Superintendent, I have a question for the manager. Only because I keep getting this question all the time. Do we have a date on the demolition of the community building?
We're still going by it, some by sometime in the next sixty days that was told to you in September. That's the closest that we've been able to get.
That'll be my.
I'll have another track tomorrow and I'll put it in my weekly report.
Manager Cousins, did we secure the black dirt that was offered from Howland City?
It's still in discussion.
Okay.
But we're working on.
Okay, there was a opportunity to pick up some very inexpensive black dirt from Howland City. Water plant and there's opportunity to get it very cheap. So if you see a pile on the airport or the park property, that's where it came from and the price was, the price is bright. If we can. We're verifying the price. Yeah, start that rumor. Brian Jones suggested a sledding hill, all right. Yep, anything else for the manager? All right, thank you. Good, all right, hey, back to public comment. Open up for public comment, yes, please.
Hello, Richard twenty four twenty three Terrace Walk, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, I was just going to observe, but I personally came to hear about the enforcement. For S T R, so we're in closed session, I just spent a few minutes on V R B O, found twelve. Advertising for next year, one of them for a week was fourteen thousand dollars. So I hope that whatever enforcement, and I'm kind of disappointed that there wasn't more detail tonight, we've had. Time to prepare, whatever enforcement is stiff because fourteen thousand for two week, if you're finding fifty, a hundred, five hundred. It's like a cleaning feat for these people, so make it strong, make it clear because being vague is what. Got us to this mess in the first place, so I I hope the word gets out, gets out fast and that the penalties are in there, they're stiff. If they're too small and you end up taking the. If they're too small and you end up taking to court, then you gotta use more of Dan's time, and uh he's excellent, by the way, I went to the hearing and uh I'm glad we have him and they have Ty.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to respond by well. Uh any other uh public comment? Alright, okay, good, thank you, we'll close public comment. Alright, uh going to uh board comments. Uh let's start on the right side with Brian Jones.
Um just real quick, I I really appreciate all the work you did on the healthcare, trying to make sense of healthcare and. I only that I've been reading um talks, it's made me about I was thinking that since this year was substantial, next year has been significantly worse. And I think it's imperative that we often wait until August, things are exploring that, but I'd like to see that on the agendas. So we're very significant, right? I think we're really gonna definitely create a uh over, we're just gonna be so far behind the people, if we don't really start that process and and almost commit it or do something. Um because it's just, it's not gonna get any better, I don't think. I don't know how we're gonna convert it or that increases our talk. So just my two cents on that.
Yeah, it's it's a tough one, because uh the insurance companies don't want to give you a figure until they know exactly what's happening, which usually means, you know, we'll get back to you in September, but we'll make sure we start, I'll make sure it's on there to start in June, and at least let them know we're on their list and to get something.
Yeah.
That it just, I think it's. Um maybe you want to make some kind of comment that was just made about, but I believe I think the penalty should be some percentage of what it is they're charging. Apple's what they're part of, something like that. But but I think to his, to the point that was made being ambiguous got us here. You have an opportunity to reset, let's make that so sure we don't make the mistakes of the past.
Thank you. Sure.
Um yes, now that I've got the floor, I'd like to ask me a few more questions. This does pertain to short term rentals and it does pertain to enforcement. I think you've forgiven us um the general guidelines on um what was gonna happen going forward. I was looking for a little bit more detail. If they're gonna be over fence and then to court, is there gonna be a first offense, second offense to a court? Did you as committee decide fees and fines and what that will entail, and if you were able to share that?
I want to be careful about how much I say in a public forum, because obviously everyone can hear what's in the public forum. Um we're looking at sending tickets directly to court, uh we're not looking at a long enforcement process, so we want to make sure that we're in alignment with um the legal standards that we have in our ordinances, but that's what we're looking to do. Uh right now, the direction that had been set previously was that we're really looking primarily for the enforcement mechanism to be uh the injunction that comes from the court. I think that fees are a fair thing to discuss, and if the board wants us to pull to that together, then that's certainly something that we can do. Uh the existing fee schedules, who are using the existing schedule from the ordinance, hasn't been updated since nineteen seventy four. Just for the, in just in general, so it's really not covering costs even for general general code enforcement purposes. So it is something that would be worthwhile to review if we wanted to do that, you know, if you wanted to give us direction to take a look at that, both for general code enforcement and short term rentals, be happy to do that.
It it it's not an actual item, but I would say that we could suggest that that could be an item on the next month or two agendas, so.
Not a problem.
Yeah, we have to be careful about, actually, we're not gonna vote on that, but yeah, but I would suggest, suggest that would be a good item to bring forward.
Okay, very good.
Continuing, um couple months ago, um manager cousins gave us a list of um communities across the United States that have recently curtailed and restricted their short term rentals. Um I went through that list and added a few more, actually, and handed out to everybody what I was able to find online with regard to what their fines. Those specific communities find toward towards short term rentals. Um it was actually pretty high opening to me, you know, I mean, the vast majority started at um one thousand dollars a day for as long as they continue to defy their ordnance up to um and granted Miami got taken to court over this, but for years Miami had um twenty thousand dollars in offense, increasing by twenty thousand dollars up to a hundred thousand dollars. Um that is the extreme, and granted the court said, yeah, maybe dial that back a little bit. Our fifty dollars, hundred dollars, hundred fifty dollars is not gonna fly with me, it's not gonna fly with our community. And um I I guess I got a question for Dan too. If we talk about um staying aligned with our current enforcement, I I really would like to um do an S T R enforcement that is different than what our general enforcement is, and um take an average of some of these civil penalty per violation, a thousand dollars per day, that the violation exists. A thousand dollars each day that they continue um the suggested period of ninety days imprisonment and discretion of the court. In addition to fines, if you're, they're running a short term rental, um take into consider the advertising of the short term rental. Um there's a number of communities that have an ordinance that you're not gonna advertise either. Fifteen hundred first offense, three thousand second offense, five thousand each additional violation. Um.
May I, sure?
Absolutely.
Sure, so I'll I'll first start on the advertising piece. That may result in litigation against the township for First Amendment violations on commercial speech. Uh and and yes, they're basically advertising something that would be illegal under the zoning ordinance, but you might be embroiled in another lawsuit. You're welcome. The intent of the township enforcement, and again, we're we're trying not to say too much about a strategy. I can tell you that I've worked with Mika and Alonso, and we have what I think is a very good strategy moving forward. But the general idea and concept behind it as was indicated, I think maybe Brian or others, you know, that this or the the individual speaking uh in public comment, it just becomes a cost of doing business if you're getting fined by a hundred dollars. The intent is to have the judge order that they cease operating. And in district court for municipal civil infraction, the judge has that authority. And then if they violate the judge's order, they're not just upsetting you, they're upsetting the judge. The judge can then fine them seventy five hundred dollars and put them in jail for ninety three days for each time they violate the judge's order. And so that imprisonment is basically the deterrent not a five hundred or a thousand dollar fine, which over the course of the year, they just pay off. It's, I'm gonna have to be in jail for ninety three days because I ignored what the judge told me to do. So what we want to do is go to court, get the judge to give the equitable injunctive relief, tell them that they must comply with the ordinance, and then if they don't, it's it's not just us enforcing it, it's the court system enforcing it, and they're going to jail.
I like hearing that. Um so what is the deterrent for somebody to start a brand new short term next week? You've been living under a rock and looking out the middle of the mouth.
It it it's the same as anybody else who might want to continue operating. We are going to be enforcing the ordinance as we move forward. So if somebody throws up advertisements on Airbnb or V R B O, they're showing that they're at least offering to do an illegal use under the zoning ordinance. We have to show that it's actually being illegally used that way. And if it is, we have the burden to show that by a preponderance of evidence that it is, the judge can not only impose whatever fee we decide upon, which is in the discretion of the board, but then also order them to cease and desist or risk contempt of court and a potential jail term.
Um then moving forward, Steve, did I give you crap in that possibly next month, then putting on the agenda to talk about our current civil infractions and then also short term? If that's not needed before a month from now, because Mika, who you said you've got a lot going on next week, you have the opinion that it should be right up to now. This is what's gonna happen if it if you start messing around. And I hope you don't want, if you don't want to let it out, just.
We we have a very solid strategy.
I will trust you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
For your great pleasure, see what other communities are finding across the United States. Um thank you for your time, Mika, I appreciate you saying.
Yeah, thank you. Um and I will say, Shar, that if they do put something on Airbnb or any of these sites, we will find them. This is, this is not a hide under the rock kind of thing, so we have to build evidence then after that, but they can't hide.
That's wonderful. That leads me to one other question. How do we let Airbnb, V R B O, unsalted, everybody else know that they should not be advertising?
So we've tried that in the past with limited success. We had, I think we had some success with V R B O at one point. Um with Airbnb, we got absolutely nowhere. I mean, they're being sued by really, really large, exactly, large deep pockets. Um we can still try, and I think that we will still try to reach out to those entities and just make sure that they're aware and ask them to take their listings down. Um we're probably not gonna get anywhere with Airbnb, but we can make an effort.
And just as long as we've got documentation, then that.
Yeah, that we've done. Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You bet.
Yeah, I got nothing.
Alright, yeah. Good morning.
Um zoning board of appeals, Mika had a nice report, so I'm not gonna report or repeat all that. And Ottawa County Fair Board, there's they're winterized, nothing happening out there.
Alright, thank you.
Um Max Transit, uh did not have a meeting this month. And the only other thing is, um I'm enjoying our new deputy treasurer, um very smart little whoop it, um touching on fast, um very good learner, very good personality. Um we got the tech skills to the pressure.
Yeah.
So um that was a big relief.
Yeah.
And um everything's going well.
That's good. Great, thank you, Jim.
Um I laid a copy of the minutes for the last meeting, which I'll be reporting to us, that's your pleasure. And then we'd also like to advise you that I received a letter from the Michigan Mayor Elections Institute saying, and I will be the whole thing, it's my pleasure to inform you that you uh sent up through the township and municipal group offices to receive the Michigan Bear Elections Institute some life of work, and so we.
Wait, let's turn your, turn the, your, there you go, thank you.
Um response advocate, it recognizes um our outstanding dedication and exemplary service in helping to remove redundancy from our local voter registration rolls. Um to get the reward, you had to have reduced the redundancy by eighty six percent in your jurisdiction. So our clerk team has done a really good job, and that's Gail Resalis, Krista um Green Dyke, and Danielle Dykens, Danielle Dykens. So thank you very much today.
It's been my pleasure to be involved in a couple things. This past uh Tuesday, I was about the Veterans Day event, uh Blue Star, Blue Star Gold Star uh event, uh check it out at the Veterans Plaza. It's a wonderful honoring of those who have served, will serve, and also the families that have lost uh one in service, and so it was a very special service. Bill and I had a chance to speak there, but what a wonderful uh wonderful opportunity. I I said, I'm still just um I'm I'm still just kind of like, oh shucks, you know, what, seven, six, seven years ago, the veterans community came and said, could we use some of your property? And we said, sure. Not, and I I'm, I was on that team and I said, sure, yeah, you, there's property here. Um I think it's one of the best decisions this team has made the last six years. Um having that Veterans Plaza on this site, what a to have that on our site, and it's really cool, and I just encourage you to to wander through it on a regular basis, it's just a good reminder.
Sure, I see.
Uh but, yeah, 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 yeah.
There there are a lot of Veterans Plazas in Michigan. There are very few that have the honor of having the monuments for the Gold Star and Blue Star families, and we're one. That's really cool.
So, so, well, good, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So Luke.
Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Don't forget to go uh ride by the cemetery.
Yes, yes. Like Alberio.